Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Muskegon City Commission Meeting for September 26, 2017. Before we begin the proceedings, I'd like to invite up Pastor Tim Cross from Living Word Church to lead us in prayer, and then it'll be followed by a moment of silence for fallen Trooper Timothy O'Neill, who died last week and was laid to rest today. Pastor?
Put your heads with me, please. Father, as I look in your word, I see that you're a God of cities. You had plans for cities, you had purposes for cities. Father, I pray in Jesus' name that we would be aware, that each of these commissioners and the city commission would be aware of your purpose for this city. We thank you for Muskegon, we thank you for the beautiful weather that we've enjoyed, we thank you for these men and women that have sacrificed in their lives to help lead and serve in this city. Father, we ask that you would bless them today, that you would bless them with wisdom in the decisions that they have to make. You said in your word that if any man lacks that wisdom, that practical application of knowledge, that wisdom on what to do, we could look to you. And you said if we would ask, you would give it liberally. So, Father, we ask that you would give them wisdom, you would give them direction, and you would give them guidance in the decisions that they have today. Father, we pray for all of our city workers and those that service in this community. Father, we ask that you would bless them, that you would protect our police officers and firefighters that are out there protecting us and serving us. Father, we ask that you would bless their families as well. And, Father, we just thank you, that we can look to you and that you are abundantly available to help, even in the difficult places of life. Thank you, sir, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Now a moment of silence for Trooper O'Neill. May his soul and the soul of all the faithful departed rest in peace. Thank you, Pastor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Rinsma-Savicaga?
Here.
Commissioner Turquist?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Mayor Galvin?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hood?
Here.
Commissioner Warren? Absent. Commissioner German?
Here.
Thank you. May we have the consent agenda, please?
Approval of minutes, City Clerk, summary request to approve minutes of the September 11, 2017 work session meeting and the September 12, 2017 regular city commission meeting. Staff recommendation, approval of the minutes. Kitchen 242, contract renewal, City Clerk, summary request. Our contract with our kitchen manager, Renee Hesling, is set to expire on September 30, 2017. Renee has been instrumental in updating the kitchen, substantially increasing the use of the kitchen, and managing two of the grants we have for the kitchen, as well as applying for new grants. At this time, staff is requesting to extend her agreement until the end of the fiscal year, June 30, 2018. Staff recommendation to extend Renee Hesling's contract through June 30, 2018. Sanitary sewer improvements, Department of Public Works, summary request. Authorize staff to enter into an engineering agreement with Prine and Newhoff to perform the necessary tasks, design bidding, and construction engineering for the rehabilitation of a portion of the Oak Grove and Clay Hill sewers. The project consists of lining a 10-inch and 12-inch sewer in the Oak Grove area and lining a 12-inch sewer along with one manhole installation and several lateral relocations in the Clay Hill area. City staff would like to capitalize on the work already completed by Prine and Newhoff as part of the recent SAW grant. Staff recommendation, authorize staff to enter into an agreement with Prine and Newhoff. POLC, Collective Bargaining Agreement, City Manager, summary request. City staff and police officers, Labor Council representatives previously agreed upon a new contract that took effective January 1, 2017. Since that time, a number of small issues related to the original tentative agreement have been identified and subsequently reconciled. This is a formal request to incorporate all of the final changes into the tentative agreement. The POLC has already ratified the contract, and city staff has been enforcing the provisions of the contract since January 1, 2017. The new agreement is beneficial to both parties and is expected to help with police officer recruitment and retention. There is no financial impact on the budget as part of the agreement. Staff recommendation to approve the collective bargaining agreement with the Police Officers' Labor Council as presented. Request to order Phase II environmental assessment at 920 and 1,000 West Western Planning Economic Development, summary request. The city has a purchase agreement with Smith Equities for residential development at these parcels. Known environmental concerns exist, and a Phase II environmental assessment will be necessary to move the project forward. Certain contaminants have been identified, and data has been demonstrated that the soil is contaminated from historic fill materials. The assessment will give the purchaser a better understanding of the limitations and costs related to the environmental conditions on the property. The city has a contract with EnviroLogic for the United States Environmental Protections Agency Bromfield Site Assessment Grant. However, this parcel is not eligible for grant funding. EnviroLogic has quoted the project at $24,500. Staff recommendation to approve the request to conduct the Phase II environmental assessment with EnviroLogic. Desktop computer workstations, Police Department, Public Safety, summary request. The Director of Public Safety requests that the commission authorize the amount of $24,570 for 39 desktop computers for the Police Department at $630 each. These upgrades, enhancements, CPUs, will be replacing the current computers that are approximately seven years old, which cannot be serviced and no longer meet the standards of the software required to operate within the Police Department. The new machines are configured with the latest storage technology built for speed. They have the memory to handle multitasking. They also will run the latest Windows 10 operating system for Microsoft. Dell is the chosen supplier, as the city is enlisted in a state and local government contract with Dell Computers. The machines in this proposal come heavily discounted due to the relationship and purchase volume the city has with Dell. The city uses Dell at the server, networking, storage, and computer level. Staff recommendation, staff recommends approval of this equipment purchased to update and enhance essential desktop computers for all bureaus within the Police Department. Unattended running vehicles, Public Safety, summary request. The Director of Public Safety requests that the city commission review and authorize the adoption of the unattended running vehicle ordinance. Note, City Ordinance, Chapter 92, Article 5 will be included with this adoption. The Director also requests that all Level 1-5 parking violations have extended time to pay parking penalties. Staff recommendation, staff recommends adoption of the unattended running vehicle ordinance at all Level 1-5 parking violations have extended time to pay parking penalties. Authorization to staff to submit a transportation alternative program, TAP agreement, DPW Engineering, summary request. Authorize staff to submit a TAP grant application by adopting the resolution. Staff recommendation, adopt the resolution.
Thank you. Commissioners, you've heard the consent agenda as presented. Are there any items you wish to have removed for further discussion? Commissioner German?
Yes, item F. And I'd like to hear something about item G as well.
Commissioner Johnson? Commissioner Warren?
Item B, please.
Any others, Commissioners? Commissioner Johnson?
If there are no others, I move to accept the consent agenda, approve the consent agenda as presented, minus items B, F, and G.
Support. Been moved by Commissioner Johnson, supported by Commissioner Rinsma-Savicaga, to accept the consent agenda as presented, minus item B, F, and G. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Turquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner Rinsma-Savicaga?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item B, Commissioner Warren?
I move to extend Renee Hesling's contract through June 30, 2018.
Support. Been moved by Commissioner Warren, seconded by Commissioner Johnson, to extend Renee Hesling's contract through June 30, 2018 at Kitchen 242. Commissioner Warren?
I was just hoping that Renee could come up. I called you up last year, too, just to tell us a little bit more about what's happening at Kitchen 242. I think this is a really good opportunity for maybe people that haven't been down there in a little while to hear about what's been going on this past year, but also what to expect, if you don't mind coming up.
Renee Hesling, and I'm at 1137 Woodcrest. I've been managing Kitchen 242 since mid-January of this year, and we have a number, I think five, and I'm onboarding another business that's coming into the kitchen to work either to make products that they sell or cater. So, we have another new one coming on this week. It's an evolving process, because many of them, their goal is to launch into their own space at some point. So, we've had one that did that early in the year, and we have a second one that's now preparing his new space, and he'll be out on his own probably in October sometime. So, that was the main mission of the kitchen, was to be an incubator, so that we have, you know, food start-up businesses that have a space to, you know, it's not cost prohibitive to get their business going. So, the other part of it, we do a lot of community activities, and then we have our culinary classes. We are just ending, we kind of go with the market season, so we have a schedule now that goes out through October, and then we're preparing classes that will start in November and go through April. So, there'll be about 30 culinary classes of all varieties, kids, adults. We are now seeing a number of private events happening, too. So, we have, I think, three corporate events that are happening in the next month, and two of them are, they're bringing their clients in for a culinary class, as well as one is doing it for their employees. So, you know, obviously, we're very tied to the market. We had a tasting station that we launched back in June. Every Saturday, we had a Baker Culinary student that came and prepared samples, and she got, you know, she had her own following by the end of the season, which just ended today, actually. So, any questions, or?
Commissioner Warren?
Is anything with this particular contract related to the work that you do with Power of Produce?
Other than tying it with culinary classes occasionally, yes. So, there is a small tie there, because we do, like, two or three weeks ago, we had a culinary class that was free, and kids were able to drop in, and it actually turns into a family event, because the parents are usually there with them. And, you know, if they have siblings, there's, you know, we've got one family of seven kids, I think, and both parents come, so they always join our culinary classes. So, we do that, probably four times a year, we have something like that.
Except for making mess in your kitchen.
Well, that's what we kind of, how we kind of promote it, and then myself and the chef get stuck cleaning up afterwards, but, you know, it's part of the job.
That's wonderful. Commissioner German?
Yes, how is the usage in the winter months? Is it pretty good?
Well, this will be a telling winter season. Last year, I think we had probably four entrepreneurs that were working out of this space, and we had our, actually, the culinary classes go better in the wintertime, because, you know, people don't want to be outside necessarily. So, you know, I don't expect much of a change, other than some of our entrepreneurs that work out of there sell at farmers' markets, ours, as well as others in the area. So, you know, they may cut back, but I know one of our entrepreneurs that uses the kitchen two full days a week is expanding into retail. They're expanding into a coffee shop in Grand Rapids, so I don't expect to see too much of a fall off.
Yeah. Is there a time limit where those entrepreneurs could use that kitchen?
You mean as far as, like, number of years?
Exactly.
Right now, we don't have a set rule.
Okay.
I network with the other kitchen managers across the state, and, you know, some say three years, because you don't want them to get too comfortable, because they'll stay forever. But if we, you know, if we're not having the demand from other entrepreneurs, I don't want to necessarily kick them out, so.
Right, right, so you're working with them.
Yeah, yeah. We communicate often on those kinds of things.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Any other questions? Commissioner Warren?
Just one last question. I know when the kitchen was first, just an idea, and before it was developed, there was kind of assessment of other kitchens, and you just mentioned that you network with other kitchen managers in our region. Between the entrepreneurs and even the educational classes, are we getting many people to come in from outside of Muskegon County, or is it mainly Muskegon County that's utilizing that space?
No, we do get quite a few from Ottawa County.
Okay.
So, I would say probably four of our entrepreneurs that are working out of the space live in Spring Lake.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
We are hosting the statewide Kitchen Incubator Manager Network meeting here on October 19, so if anyone wants to stop in between 10 and 1, have lunch with us.
Good. Thank you. Renee, great job, we appreciate it. Commissioner Johnson?
I just want to comment that I very much appreciate the progress that's happened at Kitchen 242 under your management. We've seen improvements both in the facility itself and also its utilization, and I'm just really happy with that progress and the quickening momentum in terms of its utilization. And also, just on a personal note, Renee has been a joy to work with at various events at Kitchen 242 and the farmers' market, so I'm enthusiastic for her renewing her contract.
And I would just like to reiterate that, too, that Renee has been actually awesome to work with, and she was actually, she was pretty humble there in terms of what she does. She puts the booklet together, she oversees that. She also oversaw two grants that are finishing, both at the end of this week, which anybody who's involved in grants knows how much work that is, and to do two of them. She's also seeking out grants for us constantly. She sends emails at 2:00 and 3:00 in the morning, I don't know when she ever sleeps. She was at the kitchen on Sunday calling me, because there was a leak in the kitchen, and then we were over there, but she was, like, right under it with buckets and everything. And she's doing dishes for two hours, because somebody left it behind. I mean, she's just been so instrumental, and her heart and soul is in that kitchen, so we just really, really appreciate Renee.
Very good, very good. Anything else, Commissioners? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rinsma-Savicaga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turquist?
Thanks again, Renee.
Motion passes.
Item F, Commissioner German?
Yes, sir, thank you. I move, our staff recommend to approve this equipment purchase to update and enhance essential desktop computers for all bureaus within the Police Department.
Support. Been moved by Commissioner German, seconded by Commissioner Johnson, to approve the equipment purchase to update and enhance essential desktop computers for all bureaus within the Police Department. Commissioner German?
Yes, now, who would speak on this, would it be you, Chief?
Well, I can start, and Jason, if you could come to the podium to answer the technical questions, I'd really appreciate it. Yes, Commissioner?
Okay, so, as in the request, we're looking at 39 desktop computers, basically, what, seven years old? And I guess my question is, is the cost for the computers, and you've done business with Dell, and that's personally, personally the supplier. Doing it in a bulk purchase, you know, looking at $600 a computer, that's quite expensive. I'm looking at software, hardware, RAM, all the essential features for these computers. Is there anything, I guess, special about the computers that you're purchasing, other than they're just a name-brand Dell product?
Okay, well, as you see in the proposal there, we mentioned the solid-state drives, the storage technology we're using in these computers. You get quite a bit of performance increase with those. We're trying to build these computers to last out for another five years or so, like the current ones have. The computers you'll see, like, on the shelf at Best Buy for $350 are not built anywhere near the same specs as these ones are. These hard drives that we put in there do increase the cost very little, however, you get more usability out of it, and you're going to get more speed in your computers, so we're going to be more efficient with using the computers in the Police Department. Especially, like, the DB, for example, these guys have to deal with lots of video surveillance these days, and lots of photos with their evidence, and that will be a great thing for them to have.
So, we're looking at, like, terabytes, nanabytes of hard drive space, stuff like that?
We're talking bytes, yes, yep.
And you mentioned something about the server, okay, is that now, that's just the computer world, they have, be able to handle that type of bandwidth, or are we looking at furthering, in the future, further in the future, possibly looking at servers?
Not with this project, no.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Commissioner Turquist? Is it the best program to replace everything at one time, or is there a program to replace a third, a third, a third, or is it because of usage and what they're able to do?
At this time, in the PD, it's a good practice to do them all at once, because they were all done at once seven years ago, so they are all up against the same timeframe. They've worked the exact same amount of days, so they're all up for renewal. The PD shares a lot of these computers, too, throughout different departments, as guys pop around, like, they'll go from community to patrol and things like that. So, when you get a new machine, it's going to come with a certain set of software, and it's going to be familiar to them with whatever machine they're sitting at to use. So, familiarity is there when you have them all the same across the board, and it's easy to administer to on our end, and everything is exactly the same, the same versions of software and hardware and things like that.
Right here. Just one more question.
Yeah, does this price include the licensing for the software?
It certainly does, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Commissioners? Thank you, Jason.
You're welcome.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner Rinsma-Savicaga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item G, Commissioner German?
Okay, thank you. I move, staff recommend adoption to unattended running vehicle ordinance, and in all Levels 1 through 5 parking violations have extended the time to the period parking, paid period parking penalties.
Support.
Been moved by Commissioner German, seconded by Commissioner Warren, to adopt the unattended running vehicle ordinance, and all Level 1 through 5 parking violations be extended, to have an extended time to pay parking penalties. Commissioner German?
Okay, I guess this applies to you, Chief. The unattended parking, where vehicles are actually running, so these systems can be ticketed if their vehicles are actually just left unattended and running, that's what this is saying? Am I reading that correctly?
That's correct to a certain degree, but here's the issue. Back early this year, the state of Michigan, the either House or Representative Senate, whatever, they had gone into the Uniform Traffic Code, and that used to be a penalty in the Uniform Traffic Code that we used to write. It's about leaving your vehicle running unattended. It was pretty broad at that time, but what brought the controversy to the forefront is a person had been ticketed, and the fine was $150, and that seemed to start a firestorm in attacking the unattended vehicle that was parked. So, when that went away, we noticed that we had about 60% plus of our stolen vehicles in town were taken with the keys in the vehicle, unlocked, and running. So, us in Muskegon, we have a lot of density, a lot of population, we felt it was necessary to put something back in place to deter vehicle owners from leaving their vehicles turned on with the keys in and the doors unlocked. So, I had contacted our city attorney, and we had kind of modernized the law and made it more applicable to our city. And what this new law does, if you leave your vehicle, the doors unlocked with your keys in it, running on public property, because we're not talking about your driveway or in your garage, it's like that, you leave it on public property, such as a parking lot, a street, or sitting on the terrace somewhere open to the public, you could receive a ticket from my department. The fine for that would be $15, so it's 10 times less than what the state charged. Because what we're trying to do here is more of an educational program, because we have so many stolen cars, we have a lot of unlocked vehicles, they're causing larceny from vehicles. It's more of an educational piece, and you can get a ticket in that case. But we also built in the new law, if many, many new cars, either market devices, aftermarket devices, you can have your car secure and running, they're like a locking device, so to speak. If you have your keys and your car is running, you are exempt from this parking ordinance. As I said, many cars, probably in the last, I'd say, seven to 10 years, come almost standard with, you can run, let your car run, and your keys are with you. And so, you would not be, you could not get a ticket for that. So, that's what we brought this forward for, is to deter people from leaving their vehicles running, unattended and unlocked. And also, I believe it was Commissioner Johnson, had approached us some time ago, too, about our fine or our fee schedule to pay. It used to be seven, 14, 21 days you had to pay or receive penalties. And what we did is we now, with this being on the table tonight, we bumped that out, so it is now 14, 21, and 30 days. So, if you receive a parking violation, you'll have 14 days to arrange to pay that at the, you know, minimum or low rate until it goes to the next level.
So, that's funny. He said 14, 21, and 30 days.
30 days, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Chief on this issue?
Lot of question per se, just a comment. You're right, Chief, that's something that I suggested a while back, and I appreciate you following up on that. I'm going to bring this forward to us, because I think it is important that we, the first deadline for when these parking violation fines are due being 14 days. And some of our residents are living paycheck to paycheck, and for them to get a fine and have to pay within 70 days, and they may not have it, and then essentially being penalized because of their income situation, and the ticket going up, because they can't pay it till the 14th day or whatnot. That was my motivation for wanting at least 14 days for people to pay, so I appreciate you following through on that. I guess I do have one question, though, I just want clarification. So, this pertains to Level 1 through 5 parking violations. In the ordinance, there's no mention of Level 5, but I presume you're referring to subsection 2.5A of the ordinance, Section 92-73, insofar as parking in handicap spaces and fire lanes are concerned? That's the equivalent of Level 5?
Yes, and you see those, those are pretty extraordinary fines there.
Mm-hmm, yeah, as they should be.
Yes.
I'd say that's kind of reprehensible to be parking in a handicap space when you're not entitled to do so.
That's correct.
And potentially causing hazard to the fire lane. Do we need to change that language at all, Council, to ensure that it references Level 5, or is that fine?
No, it's fine.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Commissioners? Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rinsma-Savicaga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Public hearing, item A, please.
Bid Special Assessment Resolution Approving District Planning Economic Development, summary request. The Downtown Business Improvement District Bid Board is requesting that the Special Assessment District for downtown properties be expanded and renewed. The previous bid district was approved for one year on two separate occasions. It is now proposed to expand the district to include more parcels, modify the property classifications and rates, and to extend the approval for three years. The assessments will continue to go towards various downtown expenditures, including sidewalks, snow removal, spring-fall cleanup, and landscaping events, directional signs, and marketing advertising. The bid assessment includes both a Class A and a Class B district. Please note that on April 25, 2017, the Bid Board voted to amend the bid bylaws to define a Class B property as properties located within the downtown Muskegon Business Improvement District, which are currently used for or zone for industrial or manufacturing. The word automotive was removed from the definition, moving that category of property to Class A. The Bid Board also recommends to raise the amounts per square footage on Class B properties from .02, says a square foot, to .04, says a square foot, and to raise the cap from $750 to $2,000. The cap on Class A properties was recommended to be raised from $3,000 to $4,000. Staff recommendation to approve the resolution approving the Special Assessment District and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign. Also, to appoint two Commissioners to the Board of Assessors.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Francis.
Good evening. So, we sent out the notices in late August. There's a 28-day notice requirement by the statute. We had previously given you a list of the properties that were not in favor. We have an updated list tonight. If you can take one and pass it out. There were 19 total parcels that were not in favor. Nine of these were from different owners, so some of them had multiple parcels, and that represents a 7.07% of the total assessment amount.
And tonight, we're looking at potential approval of the district. The assessment will come up at a separate...
The second meeting in October, correct?
Correct.
And we also, tonight, we need to appoint the two people for the Board of Assessors, which will also consist of the County Assessors Department.
Questions for Mike? Questions for Mike? Mr. German?
Okay, okay. Excuse me, Mr. Franz, can you give me, I guess, just a broad picture of what you would consider zoned off as downtown? Because looking at the bid from this board, you're looking to expand this district. And over the years, downtown was considered downtown. So now, we look like we're coming now back more into the neighborhoods? So what is your perception of downtown?
Yeah, it's, as you can see, the boundaries were adjusted just a little bit. They were expanded a little bit more out into some of the neighborhoods, but the residential properties do not get assessed. So we felt that they were businesses that would be considered to be downtown even though they may have some residential areas in between.
But owners that own lots are, will be assessed, correct? If there's a vacant lot there?
Not if it's a residential lot. If it's a...
Not a residential lot?
No. No, residential is exempt.
What about businesses that is not occupied or anything like that?
If a business owns...
Well, not even a, just a building, I should say.
Okay.
That's not even occupied?
Yeah, if it's, if it's a vacant piece of land and maybe, we have David Alexander here from downtown Muskegon now as well, but if it's a, a property that's zoned for business and not residential, not just residential, and it's vacant, then they still get the assessment.
Yeah, you're saying if it's zoned for business?
Yes.
Okay, but if it was already zoned for residential, it wouldn't be considered part of that bid?
Correct. You know, many of the areas that have residential in this area would be our standard, our zones, our ones, two and threes, and some of them, the Form-based Code, urban residential. Those that are there and do not have any type of business would not get assessed.
Okay. Commissioner? Vice Mayor?
Yes, is that a specific reason why we're seeking to raise the tax on that?
Well, Dave can explain a little bit more about what the bid board approved and the process that went through that and the recommendations.
Mayor, commissioners, David Alexander, downtown Muskegon now. Downtown Muskegon now has been contracted to provide administrative services to the bid. Bid board began last, beginning of this year, putting together a three-person committee to explore this and come up with a recommendation. It was discussed at three meetings of our bid board. Commissioner Johnson was there for several of them and knows that they picked very seriously the direction they were going. As it relates to the size of the expansion of the district, first off, I would mention that from a definition of downtown, the entire bid district is within your DDA. Okay, so that's your downtown development authority, which is probably much greater, especially on the east and the west. So everything that we've expanded into is part of the DDA. The thought was that this better represents in terms of the configuration of the bid, better represents the uses of the properties and the benefits to being downtown. Since there was a couple of parcels that were, if we think of third and western is our epicenter and the center of downtown, center of our community, center of our city, there were a couple of blocks away that were not even in the bid, but there were blocks on the east side that were away by maybe by five or six blocks, seven blocks, that were in the bid. So it was, is to more accurately reflect the downtown and the benefits to it. The other aspect was the increase of the bid B properties from two to four cents was, again, better reflecting from the perspective of the bid board that you appointed. Their recommendation is this is a better reflection of benefit to those that are in the downtown. And the ratios of two to one were then kept as it relates to the overall maximums that any one property or contiguous properties by the same owner of the same business operation would pay.
So the services that we provide, do they go, or do they reach out into the, what's marked as industrial zone?
Like... There are very few industrial zones in the bid district. It would mainly be on the west side. And yes, those services are rendered into those areas. Now, do they get the same amount of benefit as a hotel, as a restaurant, as would get in terms of a business typically downtown? Probably not. But they are in the downtown, they are supporting downtown activities, and they do get the benefit of having nice-looking landscaping and when they walk within the district, there is a sidewalk, it's no removal. Thank you.
Commissioner Turquist?
Yeah, I don't take credit for this question because I was talking to someone within the, in the process. This is a three-year bid proposal.
Correct.
So you're setting a budget, you're making a budget at the same dollar amount for three years. And what happens if something changes, good or bad, how do you adjust?
I'm going to need some legal assistance here, John. My understanding, the last time that we met with the commission, was that the established properties are the established properties for three years. They do not change. So if ownership changes, that would have to be something negotiated between the buyer and the seller as to the special assessment on the district, on the property?
Correct.
And normally, property bought and sold, if there's a title commitment order, title insurance order, one of the requirements is that special assessment be paid off. I'm not sure that answers your question.
The question is, I don't know how you can do a budget for whatever total dollar amount and say it's going to stay the same for three years.
The budget will stay the same for three...
What if we have no snow for two years? You take that money and use it somewhere else or...
Correct. Yeah, this is, first off, as you approve next month, if you were to get to that stage, the special assessment, that would remain in effect. So we would know how many dollars are coming in each of the three years if you approve it for three years. We adjust the budget per our ability to do the work. So if we have a heavy snow year, we are going to be taking some of that out of landscaping. If we have a light snow year, we will be pushing some of that towards landscaping. So those adjustments have been made the last two years as we've been going forward.
Some of the things that you contract out then, companies that you go to, the city and with the snow...
And private, private snow removal.
We get a bid now and they maintain that for three years or that...
That's what we're asking for. We'll figure that out. I can't, we're putting them out. I can't sign the contract on behalf of the bid as, or can Doug Pollock, the chairman of the bid, sign that until we know that it's in place? But we are asking for three-year agreements. And I believe that contractors would rather have a three-year than come back to us each year. And they may provide us a increase in, or a difference in, say, salt. That's a commodity that would change on the marketplace, so that would have to be taken into account.
Normally, when you're buying commodities, they'll give you a three-year price.
That's what would have to be negotiated in the request to our proposals, the proposals back. And right now, if we are, where we think, where I think we are at, if we have the same amount of, of bid level for the service on the private side and with the city, even upping it because we will be providing more services because we are expanding the bid's geographic footprint, we still see about $12,000 remaining in the budget as contingency, just within the 72,000 for snow removal. So we're conservative.
Okay. Looking at the assessment of these properties, now, properties that are part of this improvement districts, so now they're paying the assessment fee being part of that downtown development under that improvement, plus they're paying city taxes also on those properties too, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so they're being taxed twice.
They're being assessed once and taxed...
Taxed, right, right, okay. Which definitely, from what I'm reading here, puts some hardship in...
They're also being assessed for streetlights. They may be assessed for sidewalks or streets. I mean, that's a process to pay for specific services.
Right. But some of those services are not being provided, well, streetlights assessment, just to take, don't get on that route, was for upgrade, which would not benefit all the people being assessed under that assessment. But I'm talking about the assessment under this bid. So now, when I talk about downtown, what do we consider downtown? Always vision downtown was being maybe a cutoff point, probably past, a cutoff point, I'm just saying western street. It seems, and it's actually happening under this bid, you're actually coming into the communities, just tax...
There are two commercial districts that extend into the neighborhoods. One along Pine that goes into McGlothlin.
Right.
One along Third, now called Midtown, that goes into Nelson. Those are commercial districts with commercial activities and commercial zone properties.
And that's considered downtown? That's not considered downtown?
It's in your DDA, yes.
And that's the thing, I don't see the benefit of them getting what downtown is getting. I'm Dave, and that's my argument here. It almost seems like a form of almost gentrification where you go in and you look at these properties that are actually at a low value, then you buy them, then you raise the property value up and you go to pushing people out. This is the picture that I'm seeing with this development here. And I'm not saying that, but this is what it appears to be, and that's why I'm opposed to this. Because if it continues, it continues to just move right on into the community and these people to be pushed out of their property due to hardships, being assessed and also paying taxes, city taxes also, and not being provided the services that they're actually going to get downtown for the businesses, just the hotels that will greatly reap these type of benefits. And then I'm also opposed of a one-year, I mean, a three-year contract also, like Commissioner Turquist was saying. You know, how can you determine, you know, in three years, you know, what's going to happen? You know, it may not snow for two years. And that was my argument, the first reason I voted against this.
Then there, if it doesn't snow and we have absolutely no, well, first off, you're buying a contract upfront, the risk is being taken by the provider. So you're going to spend some money on snow, but if you have money left over for snow, that is then the bid board, who you've appointed, determinations to where they want to reallocate those resources within the bid district and the areas that you have approved in terms of the budget for spending.
Now, how many properties are being assessed for this 2017-18? Now, don't we have 19 that's opposed?
You know, there's 19 down there, but it involves maybe nine individuals. And how many people within, on the total list are you talking about?
Right.
You know, first three is one, one person, I would think, with three votes for each parcel, which is only fair. But of our total list, how many people are we talking about that are voting?
I believe there's 127 parcels within the district.
127 parcels?
And we're counting them back here right now.
But how many people? How many actual owners?
I have not determined how many actual owners. That's how many parcels.
Is this the second?
Let's ask to be, let's ask to be recognized, okay? And let's get back on track. Go ahead, Commissioner Turquist.
We've had this bid process for two years now?
Correct.
And this next will take us through five years?
It will be a total of five at the end of that, if you were to approve three.
Okay.
Anything? Don't set this in? Commissioner German?
Okay, and some of the, I don't have a list in front of me, but talking with some of the citizens in the city of Muskegon, and actually in the ward that I oversee, which is Ward Two, is part of that area, feel that they shouldn't be assessed to their property by it not being a business. Some of them have a vacant building that is not a business, that was, once a business, that will endure some hardships due to the fact if this bid is approved. And I have not gotten all the details. You're asking for a three-year contract with the city to approve this. If anything, I would be more comfortable with, one, I believe in accountability. I like to see what dollars are being allocated. I understand this is the bill revenue for the district.
The bid board did not describe three years as much as the city staff has asked for a longer period because this is the process we need to go through each year. The city staff suggested, and you agreed, that after the first year, we really didn't have enough operating experience under our belt, and that at the end of two years, we now get a good feel. Take a look at what your downtown looks like.
Downtown looks...
That's your bid.
Yeah.
That is your bid at work. And there's other things going on that you don't see in terms of marketing and billboards going up in Kenton, Ottawa Counties and other things that are out there, part of the marketing event thing, First Fridays, another event that is bid-supported. So they thought at this point that we do not want to go through the whole labor's process of going through this if we are comfortable with what's going on, and that's a policy decision you guys have.
Right, downtown looks great. There's a lot happening, but when you go to coming into the actual neighborhoods, even though they're not being assessed, I look at the quality of the service, the benefits that they're getting opposed to what downtown is getting. And I believe in equitable and equitable share. And that's what I've been hearing.
Yeah, but Commissioner, remember what this is. This is basically a self-assessment, assessment.
Assessment.
This push started years ago by the businesses themselves and the property owners within the business districts. Because they know that the taxes they're currently paying aren't going to pay for these additional types of services, okay? And where some of them were paying their own snow removal, so on and so forth, some of, you know, through this type of process, you know, you get a sure thing by participating in the board. It's specifically for those businesses within that business improvement district who, through their representation with the bid board, you know, are voting to make a voluntary, you know, contribution into a fund in order to provide enhanced services for them, you know, outside of and in addition to other types of city services that they may receive. You know, this is specific to that enhancement, that improvement for those businesses in the district that they're in, so...
And that's downtown?
And that's within the business districts, within the downtown, in those business corridors. And, you know, even those folks in some of the tributary corridors like, you know, Third Street have been, you know, asking for enhanced participation and benefits so that, you know, they too can, you know, experience that overall improvement, you know, for, so it carries through seamlessly, Western Avenue, Third Avenue.
And I agree with you, Mayor, and for the downtown area, but then I'm looking at, you know, the letters here, the ones that's opposed, and then the district is actually bidding to stretch out and extend for...
Only for business districts.
Yeah, and from what I'm looking at, some of these others have not, no, no, I understand.
Don't affect homeowners.
Yep, yep. And I'm talking about the business districts.
Right.
Yeah, okay. And everybody is not in favor, that's what I'm saying.
Correct, 7% are, the rest are. Beth, you wanted to touch on something?
I just kind of want to support a little bit about what Dave was saying when he said the three years was more city staff. Because there is a lot of, you know, the city is, the city does a lot of work for the bid, and whenever you do a special assessment, there's a lot of work involved, you know, the planning department and the treasurer's office, you know, it is labor-intensive, it's sending out all those letters, and it costs the city money to do this, by the way, sending out all those letters, getting all that information back, you know, and then for our treasurer's office to set this up for just a one-year thing is, is very labor-intensive. So we have been the ones pushing them, that at this point, we feel, you know, this seems to be a good thing for downtown. I mean, we all see the benefits when you just go walk through downtown. I mean, it's gorgeous and, and I think it is, you know, it is helping the whole area, but it is labor-intensive for us. So we're, we are the ones pushing for... whole area, but it is labor-intensive for us, so we are the ones pushing for, you know, a multi-year.
Right, if I can ask you, what is the cost to provide those services that you're talking about?
Well, to mail out, you know, mail out information to a hundred and twenty people.
The notices in the paper.
Yeah, there's a notice that goes into the paper, that's not cheap. I don't know about your office per se. I mean, now, you know, the first year, the bid was, you know, we sent out the bills separate from the tax bills, now they are on the tax bills, so that does save us some, so that isn't so much, but it does cost the city a little bit of money to do this.
Okay, are we talking five thousand, somewhere roughly in there?
Probably under that.
Any other staff time?
If you add the staff time, yeah, and that's another reason why we've been really pushing for-
And remember, the bid, the board, they're, they're basically autonomous, again, it's business-directed, but the reason it comes to us, because there's no legal mechanism for them to collect that money and to disperse it, that can only be done through a governmental mechanism. Commissioner Rensma saving?
Oh, I was just going to ask, there's going to be a public hearing about this, correct?
Yes.
So we're just addressing your questions to staff now?
Right.
Okay, great.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Just to look at some numbers, nineteen out of a hundred and twenty parcels, so it's maybe fifteen percent in opposition.
Seven.
Seven?
Looks like there's a hundred and thirty-one parcels, nineteen of them were not in favor. That makes up just over seven percent of the total assessed properties.
Any other questions for staff? Commissioner Warren?
This is probably for Dave. We've talked about best practices, we've talked about being business-friendly, we've talked about improving quality of life, and there's a lot that's gone into, and that's one thing, when it comes to the sidewalks being clear, that can be exciting for residents when it's, when you're walking, whether it's to your car, to a business, to the bus, having clear sidewalks is important for safety, of course. Part of my question is, other communities that use a bid for their downtown area, can you give us some examples of other places that do that?
There are, I believe, two bids in the city of Grand Rapids, if not three. One is in the downtown, and two are in the outslying, commercial areas outside of what you would typically consider downtown. Others have used the principal shopping district, which is basically the same thing, but provides different mechanism for, and accounting for who's paying and how they're paying the assessments. They're used for downtown management, and it could be from cleaning up trash, to doing snow removal, to providing marketing and event services, so all of those things are open and available. The bid has the ability to bond, I believe, and pay off a special project that they would be borrowing on. We're not doing that, we are specifically to the list of budgeted items that we are spending bid money on. So it varies, and there are bids that have been around for quite a while, and we just learned from one of the participants at our bid meeting at four o'clock today, that there is some changes to the law on bids, so we'll have to explore that and see where it goes. Right now, we are under the 1961 law that has been there all the time, that we've had a bid, and obviously well before that, that we are relying upon in terms of setting this up. So yes, there are other communities that use it, many of the same ways we do, it's all spelled out within the enabling legislation as to what can be done.
Anybody that was down at MML at the convention, see the benefits of these districts when you walk the Allen District as benefit of a bid-type mechanism, in order to maintain that high-quality downtown.
Commissioner German?
I don't know.
Commissioner Johnson?
Question to legal counsel, if, Mr. Shire, are you aware of these changes, or are they in effect, or are they coming through the pipeline from Lansing, or?
I don't know.
So we have no expectation of any current implications on our bid right now?
I am, I'm not aware that there was a change.
Okay.
There is not a change, there is pending legislation that was about forty days ago, introduced into the legislature in the House. It's gone to committee, it has not been given a legislative analysis yet, and it is out there, basically, my first go at it in talking to a gentleman who will be speaking to you in a minute in the public hearing, I believe it was brought up to extend him to ten years, and allow him to be extended to ten years, or maybe even forcing them to be extended to seven to ten years, so it's elongating them rather than shrinking them in terms of the yearly renewals.
Okay. Commissioner Alexander just mentioned bonds, another question for you, counsel. Do the bid have the authority to issue bonds right now? They can decide they're going to issue a bond themselves as a legal entity, and then whose obligation is that under? Would it be our general obligation as a city, or just that authority, and if they run out of money and they can't pay the bonds, the bonds fail?
Well, I don't recall under the statute whether the approval of the bond has to come through the city, I, my recollection is it does, and it's the city that's borrowing. Keep in mind that if that were to happen, there would be a financing mechanism also in place, and my recollection is, in fact, you can do, upon the bid board's recommendation, a special assessment up to twenty-five years, which you would probably put in place if we were then going to have a twenty-five-year bond, so that you don't have no revenue at some point.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I just wanted clarity on that, because we'd never talked about that possibility of doing a bond.
The bid board never has contemplated suggesting that to you.
Okay, I just want to make sure that it is something that would come to us, that's not creating this debt, and that we'd be on the hook for, so I just want to make sure of that. And then just a procedural question, so we are in a public hearing, so we're going to hear from the public, we're going to close that motion to act on the bid establishment of the bid district, and at that time, we can continue to ask questions and discuss this issue.
Sure, correct.
Okay, thank you. I'd look forward to hearing from the public right now.
Very good. Anything else from the commission before we open for the public?
Everybody stay tuned for question-and-answer time. Members of the public are invited to speak on this issue at this time, each individual is given three minutes to address your concern or your observation. We'll try our best to give an answer at this time. If we cannot, stay handy at the end of the meeting, and we'll put you in touch with the appropriate individual that hopefully can do so. When you see me make this little sign, I'm not pointing to the heavens, I'm giving you the one-minute sign, and we'll take it from there. I do have a couple individuals so far that actually submitted a citizen request to speak, and the first one is Brenda Moore. If Brenda, you'd like to come on up, give your name and address, and please give your input on this matter.
Good evening, Brenda Moore, 611 West Clay, up until last week, I actually lived there, it's a mixed-use form-based code, it was the winery, it's actually west of Seventh, and I've paid this for two years, and I'm not against the concept, I just don't feel like my property has really benefited a whole lot, and there's two things that have happened since I've been paying this, and I thought, just be quiet, be good, city's been good to you, just pay this thing. But last winter, when I was shoveling, I saw the nice little cart that does the sidewalks come down, like, yay, I paid the assessment, they're gonna, they took the turn at Seventh, and they went around, so I don't get plowing services, although my taxes are twenty-five percent higher because my assessment's almost nine hundred dollars. And now with the doubling of the square footage and maybe the cap, I'm holding my breath. Also, I'm trying to sell the property, and the folks who have been interested, who didn't offer, were small, like, we want to live there and have that front part be our office, real estate agent, a psychiatrist, and it's like, what's with this assessment? What do you get? Well, the downtown, and it's great, and it's like, well, you got a blighted property over here, it used to be lease printing, grass is up to my waist, it's probably been mowed once, on the other side, there's three homes that are in okay shape, but the middle one hasn't been lived in for years, there's been no water service, it should be condemned, they recently painted it, but people see that when they look out my windows of this beautiful building. So what services do I get? I can't really tell them, except for give them a pep talk about the downtown, and then they look around the blighted properties that I'm sitting in the middle of. The other point I'd like to make is it's mixed-use, and it's built so the first level in the back, there's, if you, there's the gas station part, it's business, and the basement, but the way I finished it, in the back could be business, or it could all be a house. Now, I've got all the square footage I invested in to have mixed-use and housing in there, and if I get hit with this full amount, it's a disincentive for me to provide housing. I've already done it, I'm already stuck, but think about that for other places. So my point is, I don't see personally the service. I've kept quiet, but now it's, I think it's inhibiting the sale of the property. I look on either side of me, and the blight enforcement, which I would think would be a part of this, and it just isn't there. So I'm asking you to take another look about the equity. I don't, I'm out there at fifty-seven years old, shoveling, okay, that's fine, and when I see the little cart go around and forget about me, or I don't get the service, it doesn't feel real good. I'm also concerned about the three years, I understand staff's perspective, it's not about the convenience of staff, I'm more concerned about evaluating this. Once you give a, you've got three years, run and go ahead, the folks who live in the district don't have much of a chance to say, wait a minute, they've kind of changed things, how can we evaluate this? I think I've made my points, I think it's a disincentive for mixed-use and having extra square footage for residential with your mixed-use, your form-based code. I haven't seen much, I've been quiet, because I appreciate the city and what's being done, but I'm asking that if we're on the fringe, take a better look at what we're getting for our money, and the sales part, it's twenty-five percent increase on my taxes, and I'm just not seeing it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Brenda. Dr. Burlingame?
Mr. Mayor, commissioners?
How you doing, sir? Now, you're requesting ten minutes, because you're speaking for a group, you say?
Yes.
Okay, and which group is that?
Clients.
Identify them. Never mind, go ahead.
Letters of confidentiality.
Okay.
I'll, it will take me ten minutes. David Burlingame, out of the 2287 McCracken Street, Muskegon. I'm the gentleman that Dave referred to, I attended the bid meeting this afternoon to bring to their attention this proposal legislation, it's House Bill 4871. It is in committee, and the main impact of the bill for here, for Muskegon, and for this bid, is once the bill is signed into law, and there is currently, according to my sources in Lansing, no opposition to it, A, because it doesn't cost the state anything, there's no financial impact on the state, so there's no opposition to it. So the way the statute is written, any bid that is in existence, when the statute goes, becomes effective, automatically goes into a ten-year bid. So what that means for this bid board is that if you vote a three-year extension, say, tonight, approve that, and the bill went into effect this year, it's actually a seven-year extension. If the bill gets approved next year, in the next legislative session, a three-year extension voted on tonight is actually a six-year extension, because the bid board here already exists, and the statute says any board that exists automatically falls into the ten-year timeframe, and they go back to the first year that the bid was created, and then they move the clock forward ten years. The other thing is if the, once the bill is signed, any extension, any extension has to be for a minimum of seven years, so there's no more one-year, two-year, three-year extensions, it would be, it would be a seven-year extension. So I wanted everyone to be aware of that, to help you make a more informed decision on what direction you want to go with this. I consider a public policy expert, and I advise my clients that this is probably going to pass, because there is no opposition, and there's those costs of the state, so my sources in Lansing say no one's raising any flags on this whatsoever. The other thing I wanted to mention was, and the lady who spoke just prior to me brought this up, and I've talked to Dave about this, is assessments. We don't know if the, my clients don't, they don't, they're telling me they don't get any benefit from this, and there's no mechanism currently in place to assess the benefits. Now, the statute says it's a presumptory, it's presumed that everyone benefits equally from the bid, it's in the statute, but also in the statute, it says it's a rebuttable presumption, and there are several businesses out there that are questioning whether they get any benefit from this. So it might be something you'd want to consider in terms of developing some sort of an assessment mechanism whereby the dollars that are being spent, there could be some sort of an assessment as to whether businesses are, businesses are actually benefiting from it. So, again, I just wanted to make everyone aware of this pending legislation, take that into consideration.
I have a question regarding that for counsel, is the, a point, talking about a ten-year term, is, it appears to me that that's separate from the assessment, so we're talking about an assessment, the bid board or mechanism has been created for a ten-year term, or some term.
Regardless, that's what I'm understanding from the comments of the speaker.
The assessment is, a three-year assessment is separate from the incorporation of the bid, so the, the fact, it's, this assessment is not going to last for seven or six years, because the bid, it could automatically be a ten-year.
I have not looked at the, at the proposed legislation, but-
I'm just talking, commenting on the current legislation, like, that an assessment is done on a set time period, and it does not run with the life of the bid, it runs with the life of the assessment.
Correct.
So we're talking about a three-year assessment here, so I can't really see, looking at the legislation, how the assessment can extend beyond three years, because the bid is going to last ten years.
That would be correct, but I haven't looked at the legislation, the new legislation, the proposed legislation.
Yeah.
We'll have to take that into consideration. We'll have to see how that affects us.
Yeah.
Beth, any more questions? Thank you.
I was curious, actually, Dr. Burlingame, do you have any inclinations, the motivation of the proponents of that legislation, and why it was driving them to do the ten-year timeframe with seven-year minimum renewals?
I have a hard-to-say question.
Do you have any inclination as to the drive, what's motivating the proponents of that legislation in Lansing? Why are they putting that forward and trying to do a ten-year? And you're, I mean, you said you're an expert in public policy, it's just in your personal assessment, what?
Somebody, somebody, somebodies, or some entity came to the sponsor of the bill and said, this is what we want, and I would guess that, and here's just an educated guess, that it has to do with the same thing that you're hearing from staff, so, you know, someone has, knows somebody in Lansing who got, said, you know what, we'd like to have this, we want to have this one-year, two-year, three-year business, let's, you know, let's make it, let's set some timeframes here, and why they came up with seven and ten, it was always ten to begin with, but they set a minimum now of seven, so my, my educated guess is that somebody or somebodies wanted some more definitive timeframes, more concrete. We know we're set for seven years, so we can move forward for seven years, instead of wondering every year, or every two years, is this going to be approved, do we have to, you know? wondering every year or every two years, is this going to be approved, do we have to, that would be my guess.
Okay, thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, that, that helps provide some insight.
Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Casson.
I don't know, obviously, you probably didn't get a chance to read the whole legislation. I think Commissioner Rinsfeld might have pulled it up.
No.
No, okay.
But the law is current.
With the current law, okay.
That's what I think is.
Counsel, can you think of any mechanism currently? You know, obviously, you haven't seen the proposed legislation, but can you think of any mechanism currently that Lansing can dictate to us? I mean, because that seems like a home rule thing in terms of assessment, that Lansing can dictate to us what we assess and how long we assess property owners?
And it doesn't sound like, from the description of the speaker, doesn't sound like it's setting the, the term of the special assessment.
Just the bid.
It's determining the length of the board, of the entity.
Okay. But presumably, there's no enabling, currently, they don't have the authority to do the assessment, so we're just assuming, because we haven't seen it, but we're assuming right now that. I guess, guess what I'd rather just say, so we can wrap this point up, is if we can get, if you could look into it and get us some clarity before the second public hearing, as to what that actual language is in the law and what it's proposing.
And why.
And why, yeah, that'd be, that'd be welcomed. All right, thank you.
Yeah, this looks like there's been a qualifying period for the existence. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address the issue of the bid? Yeah, please. I just need your name and address.
Ladies and gentlemen, Kristy Burris, President, U.S. 31 Barbecue. I know a lot of you, I've seen you in a restaurant. By the way, please wait to be seated when you come in. For little, for little mom and pops, little O and Os like us, small cap, when you come into this city and you're seeing improvements, and it's lovely, and then you want to start up a little business, you're an entrepreneur, you want to get this going, you want your piece of the pie. You find a little spot downtown, this is great. And then they say, but there's an assessment. It's on your square footage, hope you're small, because if you're large, it's going to take a big chunk. We're a little tiny business, we've been here, 1963, we moved downtown from Ottawa. This is going to cost us over $1,200 a year for three years, and we don't know what the weather's going to bring, commodities, all that kind of stuff. And I know it costs money to do this every year, but if we're going to have to do this, and I know for a fact that we know how this goes, if you guys want it, it's going to happen. The verbiage in here says that even if you get half of the people, if you guys deem it necessary, you're going to do it anyway. That's right in here, that's a paragraph in this paperwork. So, we know this is going to happen. And I know it costs money to do it every year, but let's, let's revisit it after a year, please, for those little guys like us. You say, watch us go. You see the little investors go, well, maybe we should watch us go somewhere else. We want this, we want this city to continue and grow. Can't do it if all of your funding, everything you work for, is going through taxes and then other assessments. So, just revisit this after another year. Don't hit us so hard, after all we've done for the community, sports teams, sponsorship, all kinds of stuff that we give. Don't hit us so hard. One year at a time. If you're going to do this to us, and I say to us, do it one year at a time. I asked the lady that snowplows in front of us, and I'm sure if I say anymore about this, the poor woman's going to get fired, but she said if I, if it looks like I'm not doing my job and coming in front of you, I was told I can't. I wasn't supposed to, but I've been doing it because it makes no sense for me to not, to go around the block, come around you, and then go do the park, because I'm supposed to do in front of the police station and then go on. Oh, okay. So, if we've already been in this bid process and we've already paid this assessment, now I did notice in the last year, she has been coming through, she's a trooper, man, she's, she's got it going. But it's a, it's a block to get to the park. It's going to cost the city more money to run that thing around our block and do that part. So, I'm just asking, revisit this in another year. Don't, don't bite the new businesses that might be coming here in the bud. Think about it, please. Thank you.
Is there any, any other individual that would like to speak to this issue?
Mine's pretty simple. I'm John Ruckus, I own Holiday Inn at 939 Third Street. Good evening, Commissioners and Mr. Mayor and Mr. Lewis. The, the only two things I have are that, there's a technicality with one of mine, mine has contiguous property and it's all Holiday Inn property. It's in Parkland Acquisitions and Parkland Hudsonville. There's joint deeds for two of the parcels, and one of the parcels doesn't have a joint deed, and it's because of the accounts the money came from when I bought the property. So, one, one parcel is in Parkland Hudsonville, two parcels are in joint deeds of Parkland Hudsonville and Parkland Acquisitions. Now, I didn't notice this in the first year because I just got one bill for $3,000. I don't mind the fact that you're increasing it to $4,000. Last year, when I got the bid bill, or I got my tax bill, I noticed that there was two entries for an additional $940 on my tax bill for one of the parcels, and I couldn't figure it out. But after it was too late, I researched and figured out that it was because they backcharged me for 2015 and 2016 bid bills because I had contiguous properties, but they didn't have identical deed names. And the reason it was, it looked bad is because when they printed the tax bill, it said Parkland Acquisitions, and it didn't print the second half of the owner, which is Parkland Hudsonville. So, there was two tax bills in Parkland Acquisitions and one in Parkland Hudsonville on the tax bill, but the reality is I have the deeds and I have the communication I had with Frank, and I asked him to try to fix it for me, not knowing where to go, I probably should have gone to Doug now that I think about it, but I asked him to fix it, and he said it's too late. He had talked to the treasurer. And just talked to the treasurer, and he clarified it to me that we can make an adjustment for future years, but we cannot make an adjustment for this year. The assessment was approved at the bid level, and the city commission and the assessment role was certified. The plan is, we're working on a plan for future years, so let them know if you feel this parcel shouldn't be charged. And then I said, okay, thanks for the fast response, we'll pay this year, and hopefully we can figure it out for the next round. Should I go ahead and file that deed? Because I also offered to convert that one deed to joint ownership, so they're all exactly identical, it's just a, seems like an unnecessary pain. And he said it should be a moot point, just go to the bid board, and, and they'll submit it to us for assessment recommendations. So, I just brought this to you guys, so you can make a decision. And it's all the communication that I had with Frank, and I just, like I said, I went ahead and paid it in good faith, it was a couple thousand bucks, and I'm in favor of the bid board. I think everybody benefits differently from the bid board. And it, and it can never be perfect. You know, for us, for example, we're a hotel, so we have to plow when it snows, we can't just wait for the cycle of the plowing to happen. So, we're out there plowing anyway, on days when you've already plowed because it keeps snowing. So, you know, that's just an example of a hotel may not benefit as much as another business. But I think in general, as I drive around town, I think the money we spend on it, and I'm a larger business owner than the smaller business owners that have spoken tonight, but we see a big benefit in it, and we're in favor of it. And I don't, I know how to speak to the two-year, three-year, four-year, or 10-year thing, but in general, Grand Rapids does it where I do business, and it's been really good for Grand Rapids, too. The only other thing I was going to say, two properties, but this one's going to be super quick. High Point Flats is a residential property. We are on the roll right now to be assessed as a commercial property, because we're going to eventually have commercial in that building, at which point I think it makes sense that we pay a bid board bill. I just think it's worth looking at when you have a building that's all developed as residential, but it hasn't been developed, the part hasn't been developed into commercial yet. I don't, this is more than just about me, I'm just throwing it out there. You know, from a monetary perspective, it's better for me if you don't charge me for it until I use it as commercial, but I'll admit right now that I'm going to use it as commercial when I find a tenant, so I'm happy to pay the bill if you need me to. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, John. Is there any other individual that would like to speak on this issue?
Maureen Balkans, I own Northwestern Mill Supply on Pine Street with Dennis Lowman, and he has been going to all of the bid meetings. I sent a letter to the Commissioners ahead of time. The 7%, I don't think is a fair amount that they're giving out. This notice only went out to the people that are getting the increase, it did not go out to everyone that is being assessed. People that were already maxed out did not get a notice this time. It's only the increases that got this notice. So, that amount for us is going up four times what we paid the first time, and we do not even get sidewalk snow removal. We, we've got nothing on Pine Street. So, to me, it is totally a money grab. That's my only point.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, quick question, Ms. Al, what business do you own?
Northwestern Mill Supply and Industrial Sales, 820 Pine.
Thank you.
I would just like to know, we did send it to everybody, all 131 parcels, wasn't just the people that were changing, so it should be a...
But it didn't affect that?
Everybody that's on the parcel list got notice, so.
Got the notifications?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address this issue?
My name is Clyde Whitehouse, I own Hot Rod Harley-Davidson and all the property that's there. I'm also on the bid board, I was put on the bid board this year in Huggest, I believe. I wasn't really going to speak tonight, but so many people have spoken. The only thing I really want to ask the Commissioners here to think about, is when we voted for three years or one year, I voted against the three-year, because I felt that it was our job as a board, and I guess the job as the city as well, to look at this on a yearly basis. I believe it's best for the community, I think downtown looks great. I probably have one of the largest pieces of property that is in this bid deal, probably I pay the maximum of $4,000. I'm fine to pay that. I think we ought to look at it every year and decide whether what we're using for that money, we're doing the right thing with. Do we need all that money? If we have surplus, can we maybe look at that again and say, if we don't have enough money, maybe we need more? If we lock it in for three years, and I look at this as from a businessman's perspective, which may or may not be correct, if I sell 1,000 motorcycles this year, I'm going to make this much money, and I'm going to have this many bills. If I sell 500, I might have to look at things differently. If I sell 2,000, I've got to look at them differently. I think we ought to look at this on a yearly basis, but I think it is a great thing for the city. Thanks.
Are there any other members of the public that would like to address the commission on this issue? Then I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing and approve the resolution for the special assessment district. Recall, tonight, we're only voting on the creation of the district, not the spreading of the assessments, nor the time period of the assessments, that will come at the next meeting. Correct. Okay. So, this is, this is, we're voting on the boundaries of the district only this evening, not the assessments.
I mean, we closed the public hearing and approved the resolution, approving the special assessment district and authorizing the mayor and clerk to sign.
It's been moved by Commissioner Rinsfeld, supported by Commissioner Warren, to close the public hearing and approve the resolution approving the special assessment district and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign. Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, listening to the public and the questions about approving this resolution, I'm opposed to this. I think there are some unknowns, and I think we should look closely, more closely at this and see what other options are, actually, properties also that are actually, that's going to be part of this district, I need to, I think need to be closely looked at as well. So, my vote would be no on this, due to the fact that I think that there's some unknowns in talking about the legislation, and then also the benefit for this assessment and how it would benefit others opposed to, to other properties, so I'm not in favor of it.
Thank you. Commissioner Warren?
I have a question, I don't know who has the answer, but just as far as, and this isn't, this is kind of about the districts, but to hear, and we've heard this before, as far as some of the, the fringe properties not being maintained the same as, say, Western Avenue. So, there's a little bit of concern that if we make the area bigger, is that problem just going to expand if the current district is already not being serviced adequately? And, and is there a mechanism in place to report that, so that somebody doesn't go an entire season saying, I don't have my snow plowing done, I'm getting skipped? Just, what does the expanding of the boundary have implications in, in that way?
The bid board's decision, directive towards myself, has been to, if we're going to expand the geographic, the boundaries of the bid, that we expand the services. There will be an expanded, we just sat down and talked about it tonight, if you guys approve, I will then be able to sit down and hammer out an agreement with your DPW on which specific sidewalks are going. And there is an expansion both south and east as it relates to what we did last year. Number two, as it relates to the landscaping portion, it was a directive of, and it's in the bid budget documentation, that the bid board wanted terrace, pine, third, and clay to be improved, and what Mohamed Ashatell, your DPW director, has suggested to us, is that we engage in a landscaping plan that will decide what kinds of landscaping would be best for those extended areas. So, if we go forward with this, those are two things that will be our work plan here this winter, to be prayer for landscaping next summer, and expansion of that, if we go three years, there may be expansions in various areas that would be done over time. And then also, as it relates to the snow removal on the sidewalks, those will be extended also per the expansion of the district, and obviously, expansion of the revenues, the resources that are available.
Just as far as the component of, of it still not getting done, I mean, is that something that...
There are certain areas of the bid that do not get snow, not every sidewalk in the bid gets snow removal, okay? We don't have the resources to do that. You would not want to probably approve a, an assessment that would cover all of that. What we are trying to do with the snow removal is be able to go within the downtown bid district, from commercial spot to commercial spot, and, and have a consistency of snow removal. We are not taking it to the doorstep, but we are, so that when you get out into the sidewalk system, you're able to go from the phroenthal to the cheese lady, from a hot rod town to the city cyclory. So that we are able to converse through in a consistent way with, um, not having, um, certain properties done or not certain properties not done. Now, um, I will share the map with everyone that's out there, and if we are not hitting those that we are, uh, contracting and agreeing to hit and paying to hit, then yeah, um, that needs to come to my office. And, and I, I go and look at it every day, that we have snow and that they're out there. That's my morning and evening look. So I'm, I know where it's supposed to be at, but you may be hearing from property owners that are, that are residential that are not on, on the, uh, on the map as it sits. I will share that map with you, uh, yeah, before we're done this evening.
Commissioner Frimsma-Saving?
Um, can you explain the difference between Class A and Class B?
Per the, um, bylaws of the, uh, bid district, Class A are commercial in, uh, and are office and are those types. I will get the language out, um, here as we're talking.
I just generally is good.
And then, um, the original bylaws included the, the word automotive and industrial in the Class B category. And it was the unanimous vote of the, uh, bid board to remove the word automotive from the B category. So that it was in industrial use or industrial zone.
Just to clarify, is the unanimous approval of members that were present?
Correct.
Yeah.
As is any, as is any-
I just wanna clarify, it wasn't a full board that voted on it, that's all.
I have to keep reporting back to you guys as to who shows up to my bid board, and that's not always a hundred percent, as your committees and commissions know.
Sorry to interject, Mr. Mayor, just wanted clarification.
That's the, that's the nature of these, uh, boards or commissions.
We had a quorum tonight.
Yeah. Got it. Vice Mayor?
Um, you said that some sidewalks will not get the service, but they still are included in the assessment.
There are sidewalks that are not being done in the last two years, nor probably going forward, that are in the bid district. But they do not, uh, uh, we will take a close look at all that. Um, they are not commercial in nature, they are residential in nature. And this is not a residential assessment.
So they shouldn't have to pay that?
The residentials do not pay.
Okay.
Zero.
Thank you. Any other questions? Uh, Commissioner Sherman?
Yes, um, I wanna get, um, final clarification on just lots, you know, parcels, um, that would actually be part of that district. Now, those will be assessed too, if there's just nothing on them?
This is a square footage assessment on land.
On land, so that-
Doesn't matter if it's a building of six stories or one story vacant or used. This is based on land. So, um, uh, Mr. Rooks is improving, obviously, High Point Flats.
Right.
His, uh, amount that he's paying in the bid the last two years off of, or whoever would be paying off of that property, has not changed any and will not change going forward, because the square footage of the land will remain the same. So this is not based upon value. It's not based upon, um, use of how much is, or how large the buildings are, or if there are any buildings. This is based upon square footage of land. And that doesn't change.
Okay.
And won't, as, uh, John has told us, um, through even property sales.
Commissioner Warren?
So to clarify on that point, mixed use, whatever the development is, if it's commercial in any way, it's, it's a hundred percent of that square footage of that land?
I'm getting an ad. Yes.
And that is, because we're not voting on issues like that today, that is something that we could be looking at?
You could, you could address, yeah, it sounds like you would be addressing that with the actual assessment. And, uh, Mr. Rooks's questions and some of the others that are here, uh, we'll go back with staff and, um, give you an appraisal as to where we think those should be at.
Commissioner Johnson?
Can counsel provide clarity on that insofar as what formulas are, um, allowed to be used for an assessment? You know, if we were to take into account mixed use, um, developments, whether or not to, uh, only assess that which is proportionately that which is commercial or office versus residential in some manner? Or, uh, only going after buildings and square footage of the building versus square footage of the property? What are the different, um, formulas that can be utilized for the bid assessment?
The statute provides certain types of property which cannot be taxed. The statute also provides, my recollection is that, uh, it cannot be based upon value of the property. After that, I suspect the options available to you and the bid board are huge. And I suspect that, um, among the different bid boards around the state, there will be differences because it's unique to that location. I don't have a recollection on how or why the bid board and this body decided to do it on a square footage of land. That was two years ago, but Dave may remember.
Yeah.
You know, I suspect that in part it was to, one, eliminate these, uh, I change, the use changed, thus the amount of the tax changed, thus I pay, I don't pay, whatever. And probably tried to fix in, maybe everybody's got some predictability in future years. I mean, my, you know-
Thousand square foot is gonna be a thousand fifty square foot is a thousand square foot.
Yeah. As I recall, when we first examined this a couple of years ago, the, the decision was to go per square footage of the actual property, one particularly just of simplicity sake, but that, with a view towards looking at different formulas in the future that may make better sense at that time. Um, and last year, uh, we, when we renewed for one more year the bid, we had given direction to the bid board to look at other formulas in terms of the classifications of properties as well, whether or not to use geography or, uh, as, as a determination of what your assessment rate was going to be. You know, those that are on Western Avenue and the nexus of the city center, say, Third and Western, may be assessed at a higher rate than those that are on the far eastern edge or southern edge of, or in Pine that aren't seeing the same level of benefit. And I'm wondering if our, um, if Dave, or if someone that's representative of the bid board is here to explain why the bid that did examine that, as I understand it, there was a committee that examined that and decided to maintain the same assessment formula. And I'm wondering if you can, uh, inform us and the public as to why, uh, the bid board decided to maintain that, that formula and classification for assessments?
I didn't vote. Okay? Um, I am, their directive. Okay? I do not know, I was not inside their minds when they decided that this is the, uh, and I don't wanna speak for them because I don't have their, uh, the insights to where they're at. There, you've got two bid board members, I believe, in the audience right now.
Either one wanna speak on that, as to the? I didn't think you were there, uh, Mr. Whitehouse, at that particular call. And we're, we're, Mr. Post, were you on the, that committee?
No, I was not part of the committee.
Okay, that was Mr. Pollak and, um, who else was on that?
Bob Tarrant, I believe.
Yeah.
Bob Tarrant and, um, Mike, yes.
Okay, yep.
Um, I'm Gary Post, I reside at two seven two West Clay, uh, also vice chair of the bid board. And, uh, I believe I own five, uh, properties, parcels within the, uh, bid district. And, uh, for what it's worth, um, and this has been a, a long process that the bid board was created a few years ago. Um, you know, I echo John, uh, Rooks', uh, sentiments. I, you know, I think it's really necessary. Um, I might, again, be considered, uh, one of the last ones to vote for taxes, but I do appreciate the mayor's comment that there really is a self-assessment. You know, for those of us that have invested in downtown and live downtown, um, being able to, uh, raise the funds that we need and work with partners like the city and, and a number of private contractors to really enhance, you know, what we have downtown, uh, I think is really critical. Part of the, the western markets, I, I think all of us have seen a noticeable increase this year. Uh, not just in the, the energy and the buzz, you know, that we've heard, but the, uh, actual, you know, pedestrian traffic, vehicular traffic downtown. I, um, you know, I say somewhat tongue-in-cheek, but, you know, I need to watch it when I cross the street now, because there might be a car coming. Um, there's, there's been a noticeable increase this year. And those of us that have made those investments, you know, really appreciate, uh, you know, what's been happening. And we see the bid board and, and the funds that come to us, you know, through the bid process, is really being key, you know, to getting the landscaping, having sidewalks plowed and, and cleared so that people that are living down there, which I believe is really the key, you know, to downtown, uh, being able to navigate in the winter, I think is really crucial. And, uh, so I'm, uh, you know, fully supportive as a, as a resident and as a property owner and developer downtown of what the bid board is doing and appreciate the city's support, you know, as well. Uh, the question that you've answered or asked, Commissioner, regarding, uh, how did we come to the, the assessment level? Is that what?
The assessment level and, and the maintaining of the, the assessment rates, particularly insofar as the property classifications are concerned? Because, uh, we had indicated before when we renewed this that we'd like the bid board to examine, uh, different formulas for assessing it so that it is done more equitably or as equally as possible. And also insofar as property was concerned, whether it made sense to assess at the use of the property, whether retail, manufacturing, or whatnot, or whether it made more sense to, um, assess for, uh, the, the, the level of services or benefit they're actually receiving from it, such as those in the core maybe receiving more benefit than those on the periphery, which I think there was some recognition of at the, the bid board. Um, and so I just was wondering, because when you guys, the, 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 as I understand it from being at the, the board meetings, the bid had advocated for a change in the ratio for Class A and Class B from a four-to-one ratio to a two-to-one ratio, particularly because they felt it was more equitable. There was a lot of focus on how do we make sure that the level of services can be provided and the assessment rates, um, being charged were more equitable to both property owners. So I was just wondering, why not extend that further? Or why was the, just decided not at that time to extend that further in terms of trying to connect the level of benefits received to what the actual assessment rates are?
Well, a, a couple of things, I, I guess, Commissioner. I think first of all, when we set the original budget and, and, you know, we've stuck pretty closely to that. I, I, I guess I think to some degree we kinda backed into it. I mean, we looked at what we thought the costs were gonna be to provide the, the essential services and to do the marketing and so on that we're providing. And, uh, you know, looked at, you know, square footage and, and parcel numbers and sort of backed into an assessment level. And initially, we came up with an eight cent, you know, per square foot and, versus a two cent, you know, per square foot. So I don't know that there was anything magical about it. I think, you know, we, we had an idea where the budget needed to be and, and then looked at what the assessment ought to be in order to collect the funds, you know, get the income, the revenue stream that we, that we needed. Um, I think, and I, again, was not part of the committee itself, I, you know, didn't get into all the discussion as to why, um, you know, why we didn't create, you know, a third or fourth level perhaps based on services. I, I think right now, yet in my opinion, it's a little difficult, you know, to, to look at a return on investment. And I know that that comment has been made, and, and I think that the bid board is, uh, recognizing that. And I think as Dave has already suggested, you know, we're, we're looking, you know, again, to how we can expand some of the services that we're providing, whether it's landscaping or, or snow removal service, into some of the fringe areas to service, you know, some more of the commercial, um, property owners that we have. And I, I certainly don't think that we, you know, are ignoring that. Uh, so we are looking to expand the services. Um, but it's tough for me, I think, and I think it's difficult for the board perhaps, to, um, assign a, a particular, you know, return on, on services. Uh, you know, I still like to believe that, uh, you know, it's, I mean, it's a rising tide sort of thing, you know, raises all boats. I think when the downtown is, is attractive, anybody that's connected to downtown, residential or, uh, you know, commercial, indirectly benefits, you know, from that. Now, some perhaps more than others, but, uh, you know, how do you quantify, you know, the, the value to, to some as opposed to others? I'm not sure that there's a good, you know, formula for that. Um, I suppose that if the commission decides to, you know, renew this for three years as we've asked, um, and at that point, if we, we come back, maybe at that point we have some better information, some better data we can look at, you know, do we create a, a third or a fourth, you know, classification that somehow, um, recognizes that, that factor? But I'm just not sure at this point that we were comfortable, uh, you know, with, uh, assigning a particular return on, on the investment, you know, that individuals make, uh, you know, whether they're in the fringe area, whether they're immediately downtown.
Yeah, I appreciate the insights, and I know you can't speak for the committee itself, the, the three-member committee that made a recommendation to the bid board. I'd appreciate you, uh, sharing that input, um, your personal insights as well as your insights from the bid board itself. And I, I should just remark about the bid board, um, that I think you guys have done a very nice job in terms of how you conduct your meetings, and it's very open, um, in terms of allowing public members to speak throughout the duration of the meeting and at the end, and it's, it's free-flowing. Um, I think you guys have been rather considerate and collaborative with, with those that do attend. Um, so I appreciate how you guys conduct your meetings. Uh, and also, you guys, when, when that issue was raised and we had that discussion at one of the meetings about equitably providing benefit, I know that there was discussion then of how do we extend the services to Pine Street Terrace? How do we extend the, the, uh, snow removal, the landscaping, um, and some of the other services? So I appreciated that direction, um, that you guys were taking of expanding those services so that those fringe that may not have been seeing it before will be seeing it going forward. Uh, so I do appreciate that direction definitely. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Gary.
Commissioner Johnson, follow up?
I, um, so I'm generally supportive of- Well, I should say, I'm generally supportive of the concept. I've been a, a fan of the Business Improvement District from day one. I've seen how they function in other cities. I think they've done a fantastic, uh, benefit for other cities. I think our bid has done a very good job throughout our downtown. We've seen significant improvements in terms of beautification, landscaping, marketing, events. Um, and I've been generally pleased with the performance of the bid downtown. Uh, I have had some reservations about in terms of the equity of, of services, which I believe are being addressed. Um, I've also had my reservations or pause about raising the rates. Uh, that's why I went to several of the meetings to get a better understanding of the bid board's rationale, uh, for making that recommendation. Insofar as the three-year, one-year this term, I'm generally supportive of a longer duration of the assessment, um, so that we're not coming back to this every single year. However, we're not gonna be determining the, the term of that assessment tonight, as I understand, we're gonna be doing the next hearing. This one, we're just setting the, the boundaries. So could we get, um, numbers from staff just to help us make a, a better informed decision as to help quantify the cost of this process every year? Um, you know, we know what the dollar costs instead of sending out the notifications, but if we can get, uh, some, some quantification of the number of staff hours, uh, and we know the staff has already worked quite a bit. And so we don't necessarily wanna burden them, but if we could get a, a good understanding to help inform us, um, on this, uh, as to one year, three years, two years, what, what's appropriate, I think that would be helpful. I do have, this does, I would like clarification on this now, even I don't think this is, this is gonna be only spreading the assessment at the next public hearing. But why are several of these opposition, um, parcels that have opposed, all of the opposed are deemed Class A right now? And several of them have indicated they are industrial. And so I'm wondering why they're being grouped with Class A, not Class B, for the assessment rate? And then also if we could get clarification with regard to, uh, forty-three West Clay? Because when we talked about it at our work session, uh, Mr. Franzick, that that was a garage warehouse and may be better suited for Class B versus Class A. And I wonder if you have an update insofar as that property is concerned? And then if you could also speak to, uh, the Ginman Tire Properties at twelve thirty-seven Eighth Street, six sixty-five West Clay and six ninety-nine West Clay? As to their claim that they're industrial, manufacturing, not, uh, retail? And should be Class B?
The only ones I have on my list as Class B are six sixty-four West Clay, six fifty West Clay, twelve thirty-eight, twelve thirty-six Eighth Street, and eleven fifty Seventh Street.
Though, the, what I'm wondering is the properties that are currently classified as A, but three of whom have indicated in the letter that are actually industrial, not retail. And then the other property is forty-three West Clay that we talked about at a work session as to, um, whether or not they're being better suited as Class B? And I wonder if you looked into that one, given there's a warehouse and garage use?
Yeah, I did-
Within the expanded boundary?
I did look into- Yeah, I did look into that one. I went by there today. It is a garage-type building. There's a form or sign on there that says auto and transmission. So under current, if it was currently an auto and transmission, it would be under Class A. As to why the oppositions are listed as Class A, I'd have to say that might be a typo. I didn't put this, the opposition list together. But I think we probably should look through that a little closer.
Okay. So they may very well be Class B.
Yeah, they could be.
Okay. Yeah, let's get clarity on that. Who's, are those people who are self-identifying as industrial? Yes. And that's why I want clarification. If they're indicating that they're industrial, do we, can we confirm that they're not, or?
You're saying in their letter of opposition, they identified as industrial. So I'm, I got the letters too, so I'm assuming we're talking about the same people.
Yeah.
But it seems like the determination was made that they were A. So, I mean, it could be brought up, but.
Well, I want to double check before we do this.
That's based on their, their own representation of it.
We'll double check, but I think Commissioner Rensselaer may be correct. I think that they're stating that they feel like they are a B property and perhaps they were last year. We did change some from B to A last year to this year. We felt some of them were miscategorized.
Yeah. Because, and some of them were changed from automotive, moved from Class B to Class A.
Correct.
In which case, I just want to make sure that these ones, because they are in the automotive realm, that they're not automatically put into Class A now, but in fact, they are, fall into the industrial aspect of automotive rather than the retail aspect of automotive. So I just would like clarification on that and double check on that. Given this opposition and this declaration that they are industrial and they do tooling and parts manufacturing, entire manufacturing, like, let's get clarification.
Sure.
When we spread the assessment, I'd like clarification that we're actually assessing properties at the proper rates.
If I can partially respond. If you note the letter from Mr. Ginman, it's that the property is owned industrial and that two-thirds of his property, or two-thirds of his business is business-related. I can tell you from personal experience, they sell retail.
Yeah, that one, one unit?
Well, it's.
Because he's got three properties, one of which he claims is a tooling and parts manufacturer only.
Not on Ginman Tire.
The other one says it's a warehouse purposes only.
Not on Ginman Tire.
And then the other one, he says it is, includes retail. But he still claims it's industrial. But under our view is basically you're any part retail than your entire property, your entire parcel is. So I guess I'm more concerned about 699 West Clay and 1237 Eighth Street.
Okay. Yeah, we'll double check. We did go through the parcels pretty extensively.
Okay.
Staff member and I actually drove around to every single parcel and tried to identify which, what the correct designation should be. So we think we got it correct. And I think some of these just might be differences of opinions between the business owners and I. But those two that you said for sure, we'll, we'll double check and see what our recommendation is for that.
Okay. Thank you. And then if I may ask one more question insofar as the boundaries are concerned, since that's what we're about to vote on. Could we get, if Mr. Alexander could speak to why we're expounding the eastern boundary to Spring Street, whereas previously it went just to Pine Street, now we're expanding it to Spring Street?
Mr. Riegler's not here.
Okay.
That was his recommendation. It was discussed. And it was, it was decided. I can't get inside my commission, or my committee members' minds as to why there. It was, Gary, I'm not sure Clyde was at that meeting. I, I can't speak specifically to that. But I can say that most of what was mapped out here was suggested after the three-member committee came forward. And it was a passionate plea of John Riegler's.
Okay.
Old traditional boundary.
Yeah. And there's not a whole lot of businesses that are being added. There's, there's a few on the southern end of Spring and northern tip of Spring as well, including Vettan Automotive, which I guess I could see the rationale for including them. If we're going to be including Hot Rod Harley as a Class A, Wip Buick is almost, pretty much a stone's throw from there. And I think that may have been.
That was pointed out by the bid board.
I think that may have been part of the rationale was a, back in the same vein of equitability of being assessed and contributing to the bid. So, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioner Rensselaer?
Yeah, I think we've discussed this at the work session and tonight. We've had public comments and I think we'll do that again. I mean, I'd like to thank the bid board for going through the process. We appoint them and I think that they put a lot of work into it. So I appreciate their recommendations and take them seriously. So I'm in support of what they've proposed. I think that the bid has added value to the downtown. And it's a difficult calculation of how that return on investment goes, but I personally believe that it's there. So I would be supportive of approving this and, you know, grateful to the bid board for their work on this.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anything else, commissioners? Commissioner Johnson?
Just to follow, and I just want to reiterate to staff, because there was a lot of deliberation and questioning as to why we did this, why we did that, maybe we should have done it this way, maybe we should have done that way. I would just like to reiterate to staff that if we're going to pursue this in future years and make modifications to the bid boundaries and assessment rates, that this gets brought to the commission before we send letters to property owners, that the commission needs to deliberate on the bid board recommendation and then agree whether or not it's a good idea to go forward in that same recommendation in notifying property owners rather than letters going out and then us hashing this out and deciding, okay, we'll go with what's been put forward with us. So we're going to try to make changes now. It's a little clunkier and more difficult, cumbersome to try to make changes after the fact, after property owners have been notified of this. And so I would just reiterate my position that in the future, when assessments are being changed like this, that it comes to the commission for consideration prior to notifications of our property owners. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Just one question. Did we ever have a meeting or anything with the community about this, or just this public hearing about this?
Well, the bid board holds their public meeting.
Oh, with the community?
With, with, you know, and, you know, with the interested parties, you know, that's open. The bid board is made up and represents the business community within the district. And then again, we began our deliberations for the general public as well as, you know, interested parties. And we have tonight's public hearing for phase, for step one. And then as far as actually spreading the assessment, that will come up under a separate public hearing.
Yeah. You know, and that was my concern also, just, I guess, having more input and knowing more about it instead of deliberating, you know, during this time. I will say, again, I'm, you know, not in favor of this. There was actually some, you know, unanswered questions, some uncertainties as well. And, you know, as far as go to the commission, if you vote for this, you're going to be obligated to, you know, approve this in this next session. So, you know, I believe in accountability, the one-year agreement, you know, with the bid board. That's something, if I was in favor of it, I would probably vote for it. But I, like I said, I'm opposed also to a three-year bid. You know, I'm not knowing the unknown as well. So I will not be voting in favor of this. I think, again, there's some uncertainties and some questions that wasn't answered. And for you to vote for something that you're not sure of, would definitely, you know, look at how you look at things and not giving all the details or, you know, just going with something that sounds good or that's put together and not knowing every detail about what you're voting for. So, you know, that's, everyone's, you know, have the right to vote how they want to, but just be cognitive.
Commissioner?
So we're voting for the district, right?
Correct.
So I guess, just to respond to that comment, is that I guess we're pretty confident who's in the district and that's what we're considering. So the term and other things will be discussed again at the next phase. So I think all that we need to be certain about is if we want to move forward with a district that includes the parcels that have been enlisted in the role that we received.